Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome to the meeting. With that, we'll do with a roll call, noting all board members present, including new board member Michael Sernobrana. Did I say that correctly?
Perfect.
All right. I'm practicing.
Can I read these two statements?
No?
Yep.
Okay.
I hereby accept the office of school board member of independent school district number three, 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 for a term beginning Monday, November 24th, 2025, and expiring the first Monday, January 1st, 2029. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number three, 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 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to welcome you who are board as a team member as a one-sixth vote of what we have going on here. So, thank you very much for being a part of this and doing your due diligence as a community member to be a part of our school board. I see here that Kevin threw on to assign a mentor to guide member Sernobrana to, you know, through everything that we have. The one thing that I want to make sure that we do right away is that we get him involved with the MSBA website and get him signed up and show him how to use that, which may or may not have already taken place. But that's a, that's a pretty crucial piece of this. That's where a lot of our, that's where all of our trainings come in. We have phase trainings, there's a lot of bulletins that come up inside of their, excuse me, and then there's also a lot of information as well that's built inside of that website that has everything that a school board member needs to know. Like the, you know, kind of the run of a meeting, how that goes, some of the rules of the meetings and everything. So it, it has a lot of that inside of that. I know coming up here in January, we have our School Board Association Convention down at the convention center in Minneapolis. We will be attending that. You're more than welcome to join us. Prior to the actual convention, which I believe is Thursday and Friday, prior to that, there are some early bird sessions as well that include some of the phase trainings that are in person. They do offer them also online and I, I haven't looked recently as to when the offerings are of them.
There's actually one tonight.
Okay, that kind of makes it difficult for our member to attend that. But, so they do offer them on a random basis to, there's four phases, four phases, I believe, that we go through. And it's, for some odd reason, they never usually do them in chronological order for some odd reason. Sometimes they'll do a three and then they'll do a two and whatever. So you're kind of at the mercy of them as to how it all plays out, but it's a, that is a good base point to start your membership here and to start your, you know, workings here as well. So that's just kind of a, a good asset to have is that website and just kind of keeping up with that, so. So yeah, with that, we will move to item four. Approve the agenda as presented unless anybody has anything that they'd like to change. Oh, if we want, if we'd like, we can assign a mentor if anybody would like to speak up as a mentor.
I can do it.
You would like to do it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Perfect. That will work out very well. Member Wilder? Do you have a comment?
Who was my mentor?
You've got to start somewhere.
It's also a self-motivated one. All right, with that, we will move to number four, approve the agenda as presented. So motion by member Smith. Can I get a second?
I'll make a second.
A second by member Wilder. Any discussion about the agenda? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right. Item five, open forum. Is there anybody here for open forum?
I'll just share something real quick.
Go ahead.
Um, so.
Please say your name.
Oh, sorry, Lorelai. Um, I'm here just looking through. I didn't see it, so I'd like to share some information with you, just in case that wasn't shared, it's not on here. Um, so Walmart was able to donate $500 worth of candy to the Halloween party. And then also for the third time, Walmart has been able to provide supper for conferences. So Walmart is awesome that they're able to do that, Cambridge Walmart.
And that needs to definitely be noted.
Yeah.
I did highlight it on the radio last Friday.
We can bring it up during donations.
Okay.
Not the Halloween candy, but the.
But those are not on there. Yep, definitely. Thank you, Lorelai.
Thank you.
Anybody else for open forum? Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Stevenson. I'm a parent and a community member. I just came here tonight because I wanted to address a remark made at the last meeting where member Smith referred to people who submit comments by email as keyboard warriors. I feel like that's a pretty unfair and dismissive characterization. Many community members cannot attend meetings in person due to work schedules, childcare, health issues, or transportation, or have competing responsibilities. Submitting an email is not a sign of hiding behind a screen. It's a legitimate, accessible way for residents to participate in the governance of their school district. Every community member deserves to have their voice respected regardless of the method they use to communicate. And so this brings me to my second point and why I asked that emails I submitted to the designated open forum be read aloud in full and not summarized. Summaries risk losing tone, meaning, and key details. Reading the full email ensures transparency and accuracy. It also prevents inadvertent or intentional filtering of public input. The purpose of open forum is for the board to hear the community, not for the community's words to be interpreted or condensed. I specifically requested this because past emails that I've submitted to open forum have been poorly summarized. Finally, I want to urge the board against any action that reduces community involvement. Eliminating or restricting the open forum email option would minimize involvement. Public participation is not an inconvenience, it's healthy governance. Any step that narrows community access damages trust. I truly hope that the board will reaffirm its commitment to transparency and open communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, can I respond?
If you would like.
I guess, I think that member Smith's response to it was it, and the way I felt is with your email was creating a conspiracy where there is not one. Snowy and I are not, we are transplants in this community. I won against a well-known name in the community when I was voted in as a school board member. And as community members, we have built a lot of trust in the community with what our volunteerism. And I think that was more what we were commenting on. We did not have to read the letter. There was some consideration of not reading those letters in open forum. We did make a choice to read that and in full. So I believe that that is open to the community and open to the comments. I don't think.
Eliminating the email, and that's what I'm, that's what I mentioned.
There could have been a discussion about that. We chose to read the whole, your whole email without editing it. We didn't have to do that. We don't have to have an open forum. We choose to have that. And I believe that's something that should stay. So that there, the trust that, that Snowy and I have built in the community here as transplants is probably why we've won candidly. I have a lot of respect for you. I think you're very well educated and I appreciate your input. But the problem I have is when somebody points to a conspiracy where there is not one. If there is a conspiracy, I'd like it pointed out, but this one, I don't believe is a situation where there is one. And I'm a little fed up with some of the stuff that has come out in newspapers and such where there's been conspiracies where there isn't one. So that is my response to what was posted in the paper and what we read here last time we had a meeting. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Can I say something else?
Yes.
I wrote this down because I did watch the canvassing meeting and I did hear the email. And you are very passionate and I appreciate that. Since the election, some have suggested that my victory is a result of nepotism rather than the will of the voters. I want to address this claim directly and transparently. I have attended and been part of dozens of community events and earned the endorsements of teachers, parents, local business owners, and longtime residents who know my record of service in our community. I feel in a close-knit community like ours, it is virtually impossible to run for a school board without having some relative or acquaintance who works or volunteers for our school. And by that standard, half of the candidates in every election would be dismissed as nepotism. The voters did not elect a last, they did not elect a last name. They elected a platform, lower class sizes, better teacher retention, fiscal responsibility, and put in students first. They have elected someone who has spent years volunteering in our community, long before I ever considered running for this school board. So thank you for this honor and I look forward to serving every student, every parent, and every resident in our district regardless of how or whether I am related to you. Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? Uh, with that, we'll move on to item six, scheduled presenters. So I'll have Kevin, Superintendent Kevin Ricky, comment on this particular item here.
This year, our independent audit will be done by Brady Marks and Associates. And they stand ready to go as soon as they get confirmation of one federal document. Again, part of our connections with our federal food service program, whether it's USDA, some are red. There's always on audit procedure one federal test. So when the government shutdown happened, there's one document summary or a federal compliance supplement that we're waiting for. And once that's there, we should be complete. I don't know how long with the government shutdown, how the backlog is of requests. The goal is to hopefully present at the December school board meeting.
Okay.
For sure, we have to have our truth and taxation at our December school board meeting because that's on our tax statements. The audit, we would like to get done also in December, but if, if for some reason there is a hangup, you know, that can be done at later. But we could have planned on, I don't know if we want to start a little bit early. The audit, truth and taxation cannot start any earlier than six o'clock by statute. But if you have both the audit and truth and taxation in the same night, that'd be a, a longer board meeting that night.
Correct. And with this particular audit as well, though, we are receiving all of the information digitally. Are they presenting here as well or not?
We will get our traditional booklets.
Yep.
And both truth and taxation and both of it, they may be presenting virtually.
Okay.
Honestly, or they may be in person.
Okay.
When we put out the RFP for the audit bids as a cost-saving measure, that was one of the options.
That is 100% correct.
So they don't have to find hotels, motel meals.
Correct.
Stay overnight.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments on that? Okay, with that, we'll move on to reports. Student school board members.
Thank you. NHS held a blood drive on the 20th with around 40 donors from 11 to 4. They're also hosting a Christmas shop for children to buy gifts on the 13th of December. FFA did concessions during the girls' first basketball game and they also have an upcoming tournament in Arroyo. Student council will try to have a cornhole tournament during lunch this week, which was canceled. And they also have just started, started discussing snow wheat, which includes. Ollie got their turkey baskets together and gave them out during conferences and they also donated all the unused canned food to a local food pantry.
So the Lions boys basketball has started practice for this season. They'll open it with an all-day jamboree at Inkley High School on November 29th. And then they'll start their season at Pine City versus Pine City. The girls' basketball team started their season on November 24th and are currently one and one with a win over Fond du Lac de Joubin. They'll play November 25th, which is tomorrow, versus Brandon at home. And the esports team has begun practice for the first time ever. It currently has a team for Minecraft, motors, and Fortnite. And then the Ogilvy baseball team held a fundraiser at Moose Lodge where it was a purse bingo and silent auction and fake sale in order to raise money for their trip to Florida, which I think went very well. Very well organized, the Moose Lodge did a very good job at helping us set up with that.
Okay, any comments from board members on that? To bounce off of that, purse cooler bingo, I agree, it did very well. We, I did attend, along with member Smith was there as well. It did go very well. A shout out to Lori McElroy, who orchestrated a good portion of it. But there were others as well, not to denounce any of them, but there was a, a number of people plus volunteers. I mean, when I pulled into the parking lot, I could not believe how many parents and, you know, baseball, baseball kids were there to help out and get everything set up. It was a very good turnout. I thought it went very well. The bingo was fun to be a part of. It was my first year and I'll be a part of it for a few years to come now. So yeah, I think that it went very well as well. Also, community ed, some of the youth basketballs are firing up as well. So it's always fun to watch them. If you guys have an opportunity, go do that on a Saturday when they have that. I know that my daughter participated this last Saturday and it's always fun to watch them grow and develop. I'll just say it that way as to what they're doing on the basketball court there. So, you know, she participated last year and it's just interesting to see how they're, you know, stepping along to do that. So it's always fun, but if you have an opportunity to do that, please do. Okay, with that, we will move to Principal Sue Davis.
Okay, so, climate report. Of course, we're working on our raw respect, ownership, achievement, and relationships. So this month, the elementary students are working on ownership and that's always trying to do our best, but then also owning our mistakes and trying to fix them. And so that's what their focus is this month. Elementary referrals consisted evenly with disruptive and some unwanted unnecessary comments and actions. High school referrals consisted a majority of the disruptive insubordination infractions with a large mix of others. So like technology violations, you know, using a cellphone, verbal aggression, unwanted unnecessary comments and actions, and excessive tardies. So that's kind of what was going on in the high school. Students of the quarter were Kenley Maygard, Scarlett Fredette, and Ava Hagel. So they are the second quarter, or excuse me, the first quarter student of the quarter. So Des from Blaze Credit Union came on over. She does, she's been doing that for over a year now. And actually, Blaze Credit Union, which, you know, of course was Spire first, you know, they've been doing this for over 16 years where they come and sponsor our student of the quarter for the high school students. And it's always nice because the students are always, they're surprised when they get that $25 gift certificate. So that's really kind of fun for them to do. The PBIS committee has been looking at ways to have activities that will inspire more unity and teamwork amongst the students. So we're kind of brainstorming some activities, things for them to do either during advocacy or other times for them to be able to work in teams so that they, you know, just kind of shows that they depend on each other and, and getting to know other kids more. And then conferences went over pretty well. Thursday night, of course, is always much more attended than Friday during the morning. And so we're looking into seeing if that's something that we want to change in the future. We also did have our book fair, so it was mostly Jackie Forcell and Kim Colvin, who were working on setting up the book fair and getting it taken down and, of course, running it. A few times I was in and, you know, running the cash register, so it wasn't too hard if I could do it. But it, it went really well and so they got that all boxed up and will have some money for scholarships. And also, some teachers were able to make a wish list of some books that they wanted for their classrooms. So that was really good for them. Let's see, and then also with conferences, the teachers were very thankful for the sandwiches, Lorelai. So they were very appreciative that, that those sandwiches were in there. And there were a few extra in the, on Friday morning that a few used for breakfast. So they finished them right up. So that was over really good. With the Minnesota REED Act that we have, we, you know, I have many meetings every month to implement that REED Act here at Ogilvy. So every month we have Minnesota MTSS, which is multi-tiered support systems. And then, of course, our ATSS that we're working on. And, you know, it's really nice when I have my ATSS math and my ATSS reading teacher, you know, at the first few weeks when they were working with students, you know, trying to brainstorm, what are we going to do for the student that is, you know, really struggling, really low, having a hard time remembering? And now they're coming to me saying, you won't believe where they're at. So it's anywhere from a five or 10-minute time that they're working with students for some, and then others, it's up to 30 minutes. So what they did is they made their schedules, but every once in a while, they had like an extra five or 10 minutes. So then they use that just to go to the classroom, sit outside the classroom and do flashcards with some of the students that need some extra support. So it's, they're filling up their days and they're, they're seeing some good progress. And then also we have our district literacy meetings and Jen Droste and I attend those every month. And, and then I also just got the waiver form. So all with the science of reading, all of our teachers need to, who teach reading, need to be fully trained. And we. And, um, we did have a group of teachers that took the Aspire program. When the rest of us took the Ola or the letters, which are approved, Aspire was not approved. And so right now I'm going to be applying for a waiver. So if I, if we apply for a waiver and it's approved, then those teachers don't have to do any more training. But, um, if it is not approved, then they'll have to do training. Currently, we do have three other teachers that would need to have the, um, the science of reading training because they're new. And then also Books Are Fun. So I've been having a couple of meetings with that organization, Books Are Fun. So it's an organization where it's a fundraiser. I don't know if you remember, but back in the days it used to be where the students would bring home a pamphlet with like 10 coupons in it, and you had to fill out 10 family members, you know, with names, phone numbers, email addresses. Those people were asked to buy magazine subscriptions is what I remember from a long time ago. And then, of course, it was used to raise funds for the school. What our, what Books Are Fun does is it actually sends out to those 10 people asking for donations. When we sign up and do this, every student is guaranteed a book. So every student K through six will get a book. But then as we get donations in, then those students get more books and our school gets books and classroom supplies. And so it's kind of a easy one week deal of, you know, those emails or texts will be going out. And then after that, it's all done. And we're gonna, um, right now, we're looking at starting it in January so that when we have our I Live to Read Month, at the very end is when every student will have a new book. So, and it's no cost to us and very minimal work from the teachers. A 10, uh, two 10 minute videos, that's it. So. Yeah, and we're also working on our CAPD training. And so with the CAPD, CAPD basics, that's the new requirement from the state of Minnesota that if we have students when they're testing for any of their reading benchmarks, if they are showing tendencies for dyslexia, then we need to give them a CAPD test. The CAPD test just kind of breaks it down even more. But then it also gives a prescribed, um, kind of like a prescribed outline of what the student needs. And so, um, it's just something that we'll be working on also in December and in January. Because in January, we are required in students grade through grades four through 12 that do show tendencies for dyslexia that we need to administer the test to them. So that's a state requirement.
Should be a second level intervention, correct? Not, not all students have to be.
Not all students, no, no. So we've already, from our fall benchmarks, we've already been able to eliminate several students from it.
Students are really good standing there.
Mm-hmm.
Go through that process.
Correct. Correct. And that is all I have for you. Yep.
Does anybody have any questions for Sue? Um, but no. Um, how is everything going with the REED Act? Is everybody, you know, how is that all coming together? I know that we were one of the first ones to be part of it and implement it and get it going and go with that. How was that all, you know, I know that you really touched on it, but, you know, there's so many pieces and parts to that. How is that going?
You know, overall, I think it's going very well. Um, the REED Act right now with the science of reading, the, um, the way, the methodology that they use is back when we were a reading first.
Yep.
School, you know, so we had four years of training. I know there's me, you know, Pam Nichols was part of it, Tim Zacharias was part of it. So some of us that have been here a long time, it's like as soon as we got into the training, we were like, okay, this is what we've seen before. You know, so it's kind of like in education, it's, it's, um, you know, the pendulum always swings. And it's like if, when it goes one way, eventually it will come back. So overall with the REED Act, you know, there's definitely a lot more work for us because we have more reports than we have to do for MDE. And this year, we definitely have a lot of trainings that we're at. So, um, the MTSS is about four hours of meetings a month. The, um, district literacy lead, that's at least two hours. You know, CAPD training, all, all the other trainings, I mean, it's several hours a month of work. And so we just try and fit it in as best as we can. And we do have Jen Droste, who is helping out quite a bit with that, with her job title of, you know, the Title One teacher. And then we also have Katie Blumdahl from Rum River Special Education Co-op. And so she's helping us with the access and the district literacy lead and the, um, MTSS. So.
Lots of moving parts.
It is, it is a lot. So it's like we're out, we're always kind of like moving around.
No, I knew that that was going to be a pretty heavy, daunting task.
Yeah.
You know, it's, uh, I'm glad that we got a head start on it and then all these districts that are coming up behind us, I couldn't imagine.
Right, right. You know, and for a district our size, you know, it's, it's not too big, but yet we still only have our new hires that are not trained.
Correct.
You know, so we're really doing pretty good.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Sue, on that. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Uh, with that, we'll move on to board members. Does anybody, does any board member have anything that they would like to highlight or state before I do? You sure, Josh?
I'm sure you'll come.
I was hoping that you'd take over for me. Um, so first of all, um, we are going through our at-will negotiations right now as a, as an entire board. We are diligently working through them. I know that, uh, when we, when we had our employees present to us, we had anticipated that we would be done negotiating by this meeting and getting that taken care of. That has not happened. We are sorry, but, uh, it, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot to discuss. I mean, we have 13 employees that we are trying to get through, and we're being as diligent and diligent as possible with it and, you know, working through everything that we have to. So each, uh, each individual has a particular ask and we have to work through all that. So we are, uh, we are working through that. Um, we are going to set up another meeting, um, at the end of this meeting to finish that up and get that taken care of. So with that, we are probably going to, and this is my assumption at this point, until we have a discussion about it later on in the meeting, but we'll probably have, um, an actual closed session of a negotiation strategy, go over and finish up those final contracts. And then I believe we have three to work through yet. Um, we're going to finish those up. And then we may, we may also have another meeting after that. Um, prior to our December meeting, we shall see how everybody's schedules work out. December is a very busy month, I understand. Um, to see if we can get those contracts approved. And if not, then we will approve them hopefully at our December meeting if everything goes as planned. So that's kind of the timeline now. And again, I apologize as a, as a board that we have not gotten them done when we said that we were probably going to get them done at this November meeting, but that just has not happened. So we are working through that right now. Uh, Kevin has up here as well, and I'm gonna, before we go to any of the photos and stuff. So we had a, uh, we had a Rum River North meeting on November 6th. It was a special meeting to approve some of the final documentation, get some things taken care of to approve, to push through with this bill. So, I mean, Kevin has some numbers up there as well, but, uh, you know, we went through a, we went through a bunch of different numbers. And I, I guess I can just have Kevin speak on behalf of this, and then I will bounce off of that. Um, when they presented, when Barrett presented initially, um, they had a bond rating or a bond percentage, our interest percentage on there. Um, it initially rolled out at 5.34%. Once they actually locked in the bond, it ended up as a 5.064%. And that may not sound like a lot, but when you're spending $15.5 million, there was a significant savings, um, to the taxpayer on that. So. Yeah. It, it came out to a savings of $621,236. So that, that is a plus. Um, there will, it was a very good conversation when we were having this final meeting. There were a lot of good questions, a lot of questions that are out of the hands of Rum River, but also, um, a part of, you know, things to the future. I think just a couple of the questions, can we pay ahead on the loan? Yes, we can pay ahead on the loan, but I've, I'm not sure. I don't foresee how that that is going to happen in the future. But, but, uh, you know, that was one of the questions that was asked. Another one that was asked is can we refinance? Um, and yes, you can refinance, but as with any refinancing, any refinancing that comes at a cost. So you have to weigh the differences of whether or not you want to do that or not. So, um, so those were just a few of the questions that were asked there. Um, it was, you know, it was a good meeting. If anybody has any questions related to that or if Kevin has anything else. I know it came across the executive board first, um, which is the superintendents and everything. They, they had a, they had the first meeting and then it comes across to the governing board, which is the, the participating, the school board participating members that, uh, you know, have this as well and approve it. So, you know, there was, there was a lot of good discussion as to did the executive board have any questions? Did the governing board, you know, have any further questions? So I don't know if you want to speak to this point at all, Kevin, or not.
At the time, our school board had to vote back last spring. You know, at that time, it was a vote with the ask for was potentially up to $108,172.82. Obviously with the less interest rate, and it's based on your student enrollment and other variables. The actual going in on our tax levy for this tax levy that we'll certify next month. Our tax levy amount is actually, um, $30,605 less than what was projected. However, keep in mind, our tax levy is going to be higher than a year ago because we voted to approve to do this project. But when we look at all of our tax impact, uh, we certify next month, our levy actually will be slightly down compared to a year ago. This portion will go up, but overall, our tax levy will be slightly down.
And to bounce off of that, student enrollment, it has to do with student enrollment in the actual Rum River Special Education Cooperative itself. Um, so, you know, depending on how the enrollment rolls, um, you know, that can go up and down year to year. So there's if the lesser amount of individuals that we have there or the more amount, you know. And it, and it also depends on, there, there's so many factors that go into this as well when it comes to non-members that are participating in this, plus the actual members and where they lie with their membership as well. So this is going to be a moving number. Every year. Anything else on that, Kevin?
No, it's just, we, we, the actual percentage rate is less. So that's why, no, I don't want to, I don't know if you really call it a savings because you haven't spent money yet.
Correct.
Over, over the 20 years of the bond due to a lower interest rate is lower than what was projected at the time.
Correct. And then also, so they have started on that. Um, one of, one of my questions was, I sent out an email to it as well, is that, can I get an updated list of the contractors? Because that seemed to be, you know, kind of a, a question that hung in the air. I had no idea who was actually doing the work and who won the bid. So, uh, DW Companies out of Cambridge actually won the dirt there. And then, um, I know that she sent it to me as well, I believe, after Nexus gets all hold of this. How did she say this? The excavator is DW and they're responsible for all the site work, excavation, paving, concrete, fencing, utility, et cetera. They were the lowest and responsible bidder. Once Nexus bids the rest of the work scopes in December, the contractors will become known for that. So, um, and she states attaches a listing of different work scopes the contractors will bid on. So as of right now, that is the winning bidder that we know of as of right now. And they have started on it. I have driven by it and seen it happening. So, yeah, so they're up and going and getting as much dirt work as they come, as they can do before, uh, the earth comes a little bit firmer here shortly. So, um, there is that. Also, um, I just want to highlight as well that I don't see it in any of the, wait. I just want to make sure that I don't see it. But I want to highlight as well that there is the ongoing fundraiser for the Deport Trip. Um, they're selling the QuickTrip, uh, QuickTrip car wash cards. And so I just want to highlight that as well, that that's ongoing. They're $36, I believe. Uh, so please contribute to that. That's all I have.
Supposed to be a snowy year, so you might need two cards.
Keep them clean.
I know, keep them real clean.
So, no, it's a, it is a very good deal.
It is a good deal.
For what it is, so I encourage anybody who's able to, to participate in that. And it goes to a great cost, so. That's all I have. Um, if anybody has any other questions about what I stated or anything? Other district employees? Okay, Superintendent Kevin Reiki.
We received a check for $1,900 and it comes from the opioid epidemic response grant. So our PBIS team had to send an application to David Conley. I believe Kathy Burisky is the contact person that we communicated with, sent it in, and then we were recipients. And that will be used for, uh, PBIS incentives, especially in our younger grades. That was what we call our ROR score items, keeping that restocked. And we'll put it on those. And so thank you to, it came from Mr. Hoffman's email, but I know it was written together by the whole PBIS. Last Wednesday, November 19th, at St. Cloud Rivers Edge, we had four Ogilvy honorees. I was proud to watch as our honorees received their recognitions. Jessica Berg from Food Service, Becky Coleman from Technology Department, Brendan Heminger from, uh, prepared professional crew. Annie also helps us out in the summer months with custodial maintenance. And Joel Keen from our bus driving crew. So, um, yeah, great representation, great ambassadors for our district. And one thing I always appreciate about this, this is selected by their peers or coworkers. So, um, it's always nice when people get recognized by their own peers or coworkers and represent our district. Also did some shout outs to our Veterans Day program. Again, our music department orchestrates a very well performed music program. So Mr. O'Donoghue, Mr. Murray with our music program. Thank you to Matt Erickson, who's one of our employees, speaking to our K5 audience in the auditorium. And Erica Bliss, who spoke to our general public and our students. It was nice, it was nice having a female veteran for our, our female students. And it was also nice having somebody that works for the VA Services Office because I did see a lot of families come up and say, hey, if I have an uncle or a grandpa that may reach out or explore VA Services, she certainly listened to him and gave him some contact information. So, uh, appreciate that. Later on, when we get to events, then we will have some other concerts coming up. So we'll mention that later on the agenda. Thank you to Lorelei at Cambridge, uh, Walmart's. The $500. The five hundred dollar Halloween candy was off my radar, but we'll make sure that we get that acknowledged.
Candy's expensive.
And too.
Very expensive.
And during parent teacher conferences, these were trophy slider sandwiches, multiple meats, cheese, snack chips, and bottled water to go with. I think there was five trays, twenty-four counts, so if somebody went away hungry, it was their own fault. There was no shortage of good food. Like I said, it provided nourishment on Thursday night and as well as on Friday, so. So thank you for that, and remind me not to forget our music concerts coming up before the end of this agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Does anybody have any questions, comments for Kevin? All right, with that, we will move on to our consent agenda. I will look for a motion for items eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Motion by Member Smith, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Beck. Any discussion on that? Would you like to do a roll call vote on this, or just do it as a group?
No.
I'd say do a roll call.
Do a roll call vote.
One member.
Sure.
Might sound a bit weird for some of that.
Sure, and you can vote as you want. So with that, we'll do a roll call vote. Member Schroder.
Aye.
Member Wilder.
Aye.
Member Smith.
Aye.
Member Beck.
Aye.
Member Sernobrana.
Well, thanks, thank you.
And I will vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. So that is one abstention. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item twelve. We will do A and. Does anybody want to separate them? Hearing none, we'll do more item twelve, A and B together. Could I get a motion for that, please?
So.
So move.
Motion by Member Schroder.
I'll second this.
Second by Member Wilder. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, that will move on to action items. Got to get a motion for the approval of October, or October financials or November claims, please.
Motion to approve November claims in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Schroder, can I get a second? Second by Member Smith. Any discussion? All right, that will move to a roll call vote. Member Beck.
Aye.
Members Sernobrana.
Aye.
Member Smith.
Aye.
Member Wilder.
Aye.
Member Schroder.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. All right, we will move to item fourteen, accepting the enrollment numbers as presented. So move, motion by Member Smith. Is second, please.
Second.
Second by Member Schroder.
It doesn't show up on the agenda, but in our preschool, our three and four-year-old program, we didn't pick up one more student, and we have more students registering coming in January. So our preschool numbers are increasing. K-six, our elementary, was neutral, and yet a decrease of five at the oldest grade levels.
Was that due to them relocating, or we don't know, or?
It is.
Two were relocated.
Okay.
Yeah.
One household were two relocated, the other three, no change of address.
It is in here.
Yeah.
Further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item fifteen, assurance of compliance reporting. Is this a resolution that we need to read, or is this just a motion that we have to present?
Of course not.
I've seen the checklist, but.
It's a checklist that, and I have to thank Becky Coleman in our IT. We do our mandated training through Infinitech. We do our bloodborne pathogens, our rations, and it is a checklist. So when we do our back-to-school training and get fully staffed, they give us until about mid-November to get all those employee.
Okay.
At the time of reporting on the thirteenth, we had a hundred and five or a hundred and five completed what they need to, for the assurance of compliance.
Okay, and okay, thank you for going through that. So I, yeah, understanding that, I'm going to read through with what you have there.
It's ensuring that as a school board, that we as employees are staying up to date on our required training.
Yep, so all school districts must complete an assurance of compliance with the state and federal law and verify mandated reporting, reported, reporting training each year. By completing all sections of the assurance of compliance, school districts provide written assurance that they do not discriminate in their use of funds provided by the Minnesota Department of Education, and that they have informed all mandated reporters of their reporting duties. Mandated reporting training to OGB staff was assigned to be completed during the August, during the the August back-to-school workshop via Infinitech online training modules. This assurance is given by each district in consideration of and for the purpose of obtaining any federal, or obtaining any and all federal grants, loans, contracts, property discounts, or other federal and state financial assistance extended to the district by the U.S. Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Education. So with that, I will say that I made, I made the motion, yes. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Beck. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item sixteen, acceptance of gifts or donations. We have twenty-eight dollars to community ed from an anonymous donor. Five hundred dollars to community ed from Big Johnson and Remodeling LLC, Shane Johnson. Five hundred dollars to baseball for Florida trip from Thomas Snow Sports. Six hundred dollars to the band program for instruments from the Dan Wilder family. And then also, we would like to, I know Kevin did highlight that as well, but from the donations from Walmart as well for the lunch and candy. So I will look for a motion for that, please. Motion by Member Smith, the second.
Oh, second.
Second by Member Sernobrana. Discussion?
Thank you, as always.
As always.
That's a huge, huge given, though.
Correct, and we always, you know, never denounce a donation. But thank you very much to everybody who does think of the school in their time of donations. So it's always much appreciated. So I'm kind of anticipatory of seeing where we, where our donation stands when it comes to the baseball program as well, what what happened out of that whole situation there this, this weekend. It's going to be, it'll be fun to see with a, you know, there was a lot of donations there, a lot of good, good donations there, so it's going to be good to see that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item seventeen, approve and adopt the third and final reading of the written agreement for their cooperative sponsorship for OGB Mora Swim Team. Can I motion for that, please?
So move.
Motion by Member Schroder.
I will second this.
Second by Member Wilder. Any further discussion on this? Does anybody have anything else they would like to discuss?
Mr. Chair, Mora School Board approved theirs on last Thursday.
Okay.
Their third reading. So if we approve it tonight, will you send the signature document over so we can?
Perfect.
Sign it.
Okay, with that, I see this as a roll call vote, we got a roll call vote. Member Schroder.
Aye.
Member Wilder.
Aye.
Member Smith.
Aye.
Member Beck.
Aye.
Member Sernobrana.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. Non-action items, item eighteen fundraiser. Orders for the speech team fundraiser of butter breads are due today. Does any of the speech team have anything to say about that?
I feel like the sales were good this year. A lot, a lot of people bought a lot of them. We had a lot of kids involved in it during the previous effort, where it's just kind of pushed off by the kids. So this year, we kind of had everyone try and push it to their families, and a lot of families try it.
Sure.
So I feel like it's been good.
Further discussion or comments on that? Okay, thank you. Item nineteen, unfinished continuation from the special closed meetings. Set date and time for the next special closed school board meeting. Break out your calendars. And we wanted to do this in the presence of our new school board member, that's why we waited. We were going to do it at our last closed meeting, but we decided to wait until you showed up so that way we could plan it with you and be a part of it, so.
I guess, did, did you get time to look into them few things we asked you to yet, Kevin, or not? I just wondered when we could schedule this for.
I haven't set up meetings with those individual employees yet.
So probably, so we probably don't want to do it this week then, or?
Well, Thanksgiving.
No, sure.
Wednesday, yeah.
I think that, I think the absolute soonest you can go is next Monday.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, if we want to give the time, do we want to do Thursday the fourth? Or do we want to go later than that? I would like to get this done as soon as possible.
Monday, the first will not work for me.
Nope, and he, yeah, that's perfectly fine.
But.
I was saying.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, that week, I'd be fine with that. Or not Wednesday, Tuesday, or Thursday, I forgot about that.
Okay.
Fourth works better for me.
I'd be good with the fourth.
I can do any day.
You can do any day, okay?
Cory.
Cory or?
Well, I'm still looking.
Nope, that's fine, that's why we're here as a group, so. I said if we can do the fourth, give us some time, give Kevin some time to have some discussion.
I should be able to do it.
Do it the fourth then?
I'm okay with that, Cory. What time I need.
I could be here by four-thirty.
Do you want to do it that early, do you have a time?
Or you want to do it by available any time?
No, I, I don't care, I'm just, I just need to know from my work schedule as well, so that.
Well, and really, I think there's only three more employees.
There is, but it could be a lengthy topic if we have.
Probably be as long as the last one.
It's not, that was pretty. Good four hours there.
Four-thirty? Yeah, let's keep it at four-thirty.
Four-thirty?
Sixteen-thirty?
Or four-thirty. And Kathy would be happy to send a calendar invite to get that taken care of, so.
I won't do that.
Four-thirty, December fourth. In this boardroom unless something changes with scheduling.
Okay, got that.
Thank you very much for that. Is our, are we still going to have our regular school board meeting on the twenty-second of December? I am planning on, yes?
I will not be here, but you can, if you have my, my daughter's birthday. We'll be out of town.
Okay.
No, I don't think we have drill in December, so we should be fine.
Are we good for that day? I'm just trying to.
Mr. Chair, we announced to our public that that's truth and taxation rights.
That is correct, I'm just confirming that we are still good to go and everything. So, yeah, that is pretty well set in stone, and that was on, it's been announced.
Twenty-second.
That is the twenty-second, yes, so. And we are not starting any earlier for the truth and tax taxation, or are we?
By statute, asking.
Oh, that's right, six o'clock, yeah, it's got to be at six o'clock, so. And if we're having our, if the audit goes through that date, do we want to start earlier for the audit or not? I'm just having a conversation here, so.
I like to see when they're available.
Okay, I'm just trying to have this conversation so that way, you know, if it's going to be a lengthy meeting, we can shorten it up on one end compared to the other, so. Yeah, well, the other thing is, is that I was hoping that Gary Lovitz was going to be here on this meeting so we could cover our end-of-year stuff, but.
He's on state right now, he's in Nebraska.
Oh, well, that would be why he's not here. So, you know, it'd be nice to have him here for that meeting, but.
I think looking in January, we do need to set up probably a work session where we invite elders in and Gary.
Maybe it's good to just have them here at the same exact time so we get that taken care of and we can.
I think December would, if we have truth and taxation and audit in December, December's pretty packed already.
Yeah, exactly, and that's what I was, yeah, okay, then we'll, so we'll have, we'll for sure have two meetings in January. We'll have our quote-unquote first Monday of the month, our organizational meeting, and then we'll have our regular school board meeting there as well. So it will be determined. All right, so that is Sep- December fourth and fourth-thirty. Item twenty, registration open for the 2026 MSBA Leadership Conference, January fifteenth and sixteenth. Pretty straightforward. For you, Members Sernobrana, it's just a, we have been going down just for the day on Thursday. We go down, we leave relatively early in the morning, go down, they have kind of an opening session go on there. They have a keynote speaker, there's a lot of, and when you get set up on the MSBA website, you'll see everything that happens there. It's a, it's a pretty big deal through MSBA on what they have going on there. It's their, their highlight, their one highlight of the year, you know, promoting everything. There's a lot of, in one of the halls there, there's a lot of vendors that you get to walk through and do. The ones that I like are the cookies in the kitchen stuff, so I'm not sure why, but there's all of that. You get to see the robotics, you get to see, you know, every, every aspect is there, so it's a really cool time. So as of right now, we've been just going down on that Thursday, it's a really fast day. There's a lot of breakout sessions there that you get to go through, and go through there as well. So it's a, it's a quick day. So, yeah, we've been doing that, yeah. Do we have any comments or questions on that?
Only, you go just Thursday?
We have been going just Thursday. We, I know a lot of the other districts that do travel do the two-day deal if they're staying down there, so they do the, yep, they do the two-day thing. If we wanted to go both days, I am not opposed whatsoever. There are a lot of, a lot of things to do there, there's a lot of breakout sessions, there's a lot to learn in a short period of time. So it's a really good opportunity. And if you are any, if, if, once you get the schedule and see it, if there's anything that really you want to take in or absorb, I am more than happy to go both days with you and take it in, or however you want to do that. I know Kevin would probably be apt to do that as well, so. Yeah, it's a, it's a really good opportunity for a school board member to take in a lot of information. So, and then also, you know, you guys as well, Ally went last year as well, and I hope that Tucker comes with this year too. But it's a good time for you guys to network with other student school board members there, there's not a lot. So it's kind of cool that we, that we have that. I think, you know, there's a few of them that you guys get to run into, but that's kind of the, the neat thing about OGB is that we have student school board members, so that's kind of makes us unique in that aspect. All right, item 21, events and dates of interest. I don't know, Kevin, if there's ones on here that you want to highlight. December is going to be a very busy month, uh, well, November and December, I guess. Uh, you know, we have Thanksgiving break coming up here at the end of the week.
Yeah, year, yearbook, we are taking yearbook orders now. And just remember that ordering process, that is an online process for, there's the elementary K-6 yearbook as well as the traditional high school yearbook for grades seven through 12. Parents of band students, uh, accessories can be ordered and delivered at school. And I think when I talk about accessories, I believe that's like reeds for instruments.
The oil stuff.
Trombone slide oil, drumsticks, parts, if you need to update that, that can be done as well. I believe tomorrow, I don't know if that's tomorrow at midnight, November 25th, there is an online feature for ordering, so if you saw something at the book fair during parent-teacher conferences you liked, or that is something that you can go on and do an online order, even though I see the physical book fair has been backed on and moved on. Tomorrow's pop-up pantry in our parking lot. Nice thing about that is hopefully it'll be ahead of the precipitation that's supposed to be coming on Wednesday. Thanksgiving break, again, uh, next Monday is not a student day for Ogilvy students, so they have the 28th, 29th, and next Monday, the 1st. Students that are looking at submitting a design for yearbook covers, again, that students can put in graphic work or artwork, make sure you get that in by Tuesday. And already, next, not Friday, not Thanksgiving Friday, but the following Friday is midterm of second quarter. And I especially look at our college and the high school students and our seniors and that. Uh, this is the five-day push to, five-week push for the end of semester one, so it's important to finish well, even though we kind of hit the holiday season with Thanksgiving break and winter break. Fifth quarter will be activated again by community ad out at Ogilvy Raceway. That will be after the girls' home game on Friday, December 12th. Prepare, some mark your calendars on that. Saturday, December 13th, Winter Holiday Store. It's two parts, there's activities that start out in the AM here at school, 10:00 AM, and it'll be in the West Gym and Library, I believe there, I have to check the calendar. I believe there may be a wrestling event here that weekend, so that might be why that, we're looking at those alternate locations, but children can make cards, cookies, snacks, play bingo, visit Grinchville, and they can make an ornament, and I believe there will be an audit, movie playing in auditorium. And if you can't make the morning activities, or if you can make both then, you can head to the fire hall in the afternoon, and Apple, Apple ends at 1:00. Again, Santa, photos, enter drawings, I think there's more treats, and there's a different movie that'll be playing there. So if you can't make the AM work, make the PM or vice versa, or if you can make both work, please do so. Mark your calendars, there'll be a 7:00 PM winter holiday concert for the band, and I missed the music one. Here it is. I apologize. Wednesday, December 10th, for our elementary singers. 2:00 PM, winter holiday music concert for grades K through 5, so if you need to contact your employer, that'll be a 2:00 PM performance. And that will be Wednesday, December 10th, and then the following week, Thursday, December 18th, is winter band concert. And again, there will be a high school vocal concert coming up at a later date. Again, school is in session Monday, December 22nd, because that's going into winter holiday, and that's also the same night as our next school board meeting.
Okay? Anybody have any questions, comments on the upcoming busy, busy holiday schedules that we have? Okay? Does anybody have any other?
Mr. Board Chair, after we submitted our four-day week application last year, where we had to do multiple years in advance?
Yep.
The legislature did pass that for the '26, '27 school year and '27, '27, '28 school year, all middle school schools could start before Labor Day.
Yep.
So even though we did all those advanced calendars, advance, we may have to revisit looking at our '25, '26, excuse me, '26, '27 calendar. And the reason I'm asking is we coordinate a lot of services, like with the Rum River Special Ed Co-op and our neighboring school districts. Uh, so I'm just planting that seed that, uh, I will double check, but we may have to revisit our, uh... We certainly can stay as what we approved...
Yep.
Last spring, but it is a unique opportunity that the legislature did allow all Minnesota schools to start before Labor Day the next two calendar years.
I do know of a lot of school districts that do start before Labor Day and do get done, um, earlier. There's several, um, bordering states that start significantly earlier than us, and that, so. Okay? Uh, anybody have any other other?
I got one. In regards to the open forum emails, um, beginning we have some new board members on here.
Yep.
Okay, the only reason that was even started was due to COVID.
Correct.
Because public couldn't come in. And after COVID, we discussed as a board and said we were going to discontinue that. That's where a lot of them comments came from last week.
Correct.
So I think as a board, we're going to figure out going forward what we're going to do.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to do that now or figure that out at a later date or what.
I'm not opposed to having that conversation right now.
So...
At all. So is there anybody?
We don't have to do it the way we have been, I'm just saying, if we spread that out for anyone watching.
Yep, so that way there is no confusion.
Yep.
Um, is anybody in opposition to having the email open? I am not in opposition, I, not to go against you, but I believe that any opportunity to reach out to the board members, any way they can, is a great opportunity to do so through email and such. It's the way the world communicates.
There's a difference between communicating with the school board and open forum emails, because anybody can email us at any time with any questions or concerns, but the open forum part of it is, we take that email and we read it out loud.
Correct, and they know that when they're submitting that.
I know, but I'm just saying, there's a difference between just emailing us whenever they'd like, or...
And all of that is public information, they can all be read at any point in time as well.
Does a private person have to advise when they send an email that they want to read in open forum?
No, it's public information, we can read it at will.
Okay.
So if we go forth with open forum, all emails sent to open forum will be read aloud?
Correct.
Regardless of content?
Yep. Why not? If they're submitting, uh, an email to open forums?
Say, and then get into a slippery slope.
Well, I, I, that's why we're having the discussion, if you're opposed to it.
I mean, if it's something libelous or slander or wild lies, I don't think you should be reading it.
Mr. Chair, can you read the description, that might help?
You're talking the guidelines?
Yeah, especially that second paragraph.
Open forum, uh, open, public forums is an opportunity for members of the school district to address the school board. During this portion of the meeting, the school board and administration will listen to comments. However, the school board will most likely not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversations with speakers during public forum. While comments and questions are welcome, law prohibits the school board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. The school board will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. In order to complete school board meetings in a timely manner, the open forum will be limited with each individual speaking, speaker being allotted up to three minutes, so. I mean, I guess it is at the discretion of the school board how we would like to proceed with reading that when it comes to those concerns, so. I, I, I'm not appo, I, if they're willing to subject it to us, I mean, either they're going to state it here if they come, which we generally don't get any money, or, and say it then, or they're going to submit it via this way, and we can determine whether or not we would like to read it, so. Or if you guys don't want to do it at all, that's fine as well. I'm, I'm, I'm one-sixth of this whole...
As long as we have a plan going forward, I'm good with it.
I, 100% agree.
We have a plan.
Yep, that sounds good.
Cory, do you have any comment, questions?
As we plan on following the guidelines.
Okay, that's perfectly fine, so I just want to make it possible for people to communicate with us as well. Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Um, I just want to give a shout-out again to the, um, to everybody that put together all the conferences and everything that goes along with that and orchestrating all that, the fair, the meals, the donations, everything that goes along with that. There were no cookies this year. I was kind of disappointed that there was no, but, uh, no, it was, it wa, it was really good. I'm glad that we, the families have the opportunity to come into the school and participate in that, and that's always fun to see that, so. Thank you to all who, all the staff who participated in that and got everything put together, so. Thank you for that. With that, I will, uh, move to item number 23.
Motion to adjourn, 7:16.
Motion by member Smith, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Wilder, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously at this meeting, consider.